I'd like to call the November study session to order. Let's record show that everyone's here but Dr. Holman, and he has somewhat of a conflict tonight, I think. Hopefully, a good conflict. Please silence your cellphones, if you would, and if you would, stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Special recognition, we have a couple items tonight, Dr. Ritter.
Today, we have an opportunity to recognize one of our top physical education teachers, who's really into cups and balls. But anyway, she's just very, very good. And at this time, if Mr. Hackenworth come forward, please, to introduce our special honored guest.
Good evening, Mr. Lee, members of the board and Dr. Ritter. It's my sincere pleasure to come before you tonight to recognize Wilder Elementary School's physical education teacher, Diana Duncan Attnem, or Coach D. Coach D's been named the Missouri State Physical Education Teacher of the Year, and will be recognized later this month at the Missouri Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation and Dance Fall Conference. Coach D has been with SPS for 27 years, and taught physical education at Portland, Sequoia D, Jeffries, and at Wilder since 1983. To be eligible for Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year, a teacher must be nominated and approved by the district representative of the organization. Principals are asked to complete a nomination form, and a district winner selected by June 1st. A committee then determines the state winner, and both district and state winners are recognized at a banquet at the convention. Joining me this evening to introduce Coach D, and give a little insight as to what makes her special, is Wilder Elementary Principal, Jason Steingruber.
I don't think he brought any cups and balls with him, though, so I'm not sure.
We don't get to stack?
Thank you, Dr. Hackenworth. When I think of Coach D and her unbelievable impact on not only children and adults, I ask myself, how do you quantify and qualify her influence? Coach D, we come on up here, please. First, to put some numbers together towards her influence, over 27 years of touching people's lives, greater than 10,800 students have been touched by how great she is. Of those, too many to count are parents of current students. I know that there are parents here, within the room, that have had Coach D serve their students, as well as I consistently, consistently, every day, have parents come up to me, have said that they have been taught by Coach D, they have pictures of themselves with Coach D that they're saving. It's just an absolutely remarkable, remarkable experience to be able to work with her. Forty cup stackers a year, okay, let's put this together. Approximately 11,000 cups have been slipping and sliding across gym floors at 7:45 in the morning, over her tenure. Approximately 2,240 juggling balls, hoops, and scarves have been flying into the air, and have impacted kids. Now to qualify what Coach D means to Springfield Public Schools, and how I have met her over the last six months. She is a person that will step up at any time to do anything needed, even if it's not within her job description. Coach D continues to build and maintain relationships with students and families who have graduated Wilder, and she is a true example of what is so great about Springfield Public Schools. I guarantee personally, if anything I need, or my family needs, even no matter what time it is, Coach D would be there for me. Her selfless and humble approach to people around her is unmatched. It is a true joy to have, to watch her serve not only students, but parents, staff, and the community, and the community members every day. It is my honor to introduce Coach D, Diana Duncan, Coach Attnem.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Ben. I want to thank you tonight for taking the time to recognize me at this evening's school board meeting, and the opportunity to work for Springfield Public Schools for 27 years. Actually, I was a permanent sub before that, so can we add a year in there? No, I'm just kidding. I have been blessed, because I had a father who was a teacher and a coach for 31 years in Catsville, Missouri, and a mom who took care of preschoolers. And so, the love of small children was instilled in me at a young age. I've had, been fortunate enough to have had Greg, and Christie, and Abby Lee, Alex, and Bren Prater, and been fortunate enough to taught with Mrs. Renner at one time. It says I only taught at four elementaries, but I looked it up today, and there's been 11 elementaries that I've actually taught at. I'm currently also at Central with the Middle School Gifted Scholars Program. I've been there nine years, and it's a fabulous thing for those kids. And I love every Friday, because it's a new challenge, and they come in just very excited about PE. So, giving them that opportunity was, was very worthwhile. I appreciate my support from Teresa Miller, and both Mark Fisher, and their aspects, and what I do in my job. But I've been very blessed with working with fabulous kids and talented kids, fabulous PTAs, and, and some very strong administrators. I go back to Frida Hornback and Polly Copper, were very, still, some of my very two first administrators to work with. I was telling Jason today that Polly used to ring the bell, and Mrs. Hornback, of course, we lost her last year, but all she had to do was look at you with that smile, and the kids would stop. But, you know, I have been very blessed, and I guess again, thank you for this opportunity. Juggling, I've been doing for over 25 years, so I have a lot of jugglers out there. Speed stacking, I kind of brought to Springfield about nine years ago. But hopefully, I teach kids more than just that, to juggle a few things in your life, because if, you know, you make a mistake, you fix it, move on. And hopefully, in my daily classroom, I'm teaching them a little bit more about teamwork, and cooperation, and how to build character, because those are important life skills. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Coach D, and I can vouch for just about everything that was said. Next item?
Next item, first of all, Coach D, just to be around people is really what it's all about. Where'd you go? Did you leave already? Oh, okay. Just to be around, to have you around people, is what it's all about, so I want to thank you for just being you, okay?
Thank you.
Sure. At this time, we would like to recognize Kickapoo High School, and for their accreditation as far as the ban's dead. So, Dr. Harrell, if you would, please.
Good evening, sir. Evening, board. Appreciate you having us here this evening. It is my pleasure to bring forward Mr. David Schmidt, and some members of the Kickapoo teaching staff that have been able to join him this evening, and to recognize the accomplishments of the entire staff in building, and becoming not only fully accredited through the North Central Association and Advanced Ed Association, but to do so by meeting four out of seven areas as being highly proficient. That's an incredible feat, an outstanding job by that school and by their staff. And so, with that being said, I'll bring forward Mr. Schmitz.
Thank you, Dr. Harrell. Good evening, board, Dr. Ritter, and staff. It is truly a privilege to get to be a part of Kickapoo High School, for one. Going through a review of this nature is really a reason to step back, and to go through an assessment of yourself. And what, what we got, have been able to do over the past, really, 18 months, is, is look at Kickapoo High School as a system, as a, as a institution, that is focused on students, on student continuous improvement, that's focused on continually getting better. And, you know, we can, we can look at the seven standards by which we're evaluated, and, and break them down, but really, for me, the most valuable part of the whole process, of course, the journey, but was the presentation. To, to have our staff members, and some of them are here, and students as well, and we're going to introduce them, but before I have them come up, I just want to, to just share a little bit about what I saw them do. Actually, I'll have them stand first. We have two students here, who represent, Brooke McMillan is our student body president, and Katie Lynn is one of our cabinet members as well, so they're here. Thank you, ladies, for coming. And Cynthia Byalander, Phil Hocken Smith, and Mr. Brandon Clark are here. Each, they're representative of, of just the group that did so much to help Kickapoo through this process. And so, to, to the pinnacle, the morning of having a group of eight colleagues from around the state come to evaluate our school, to see the pride beam in the students, in the staff, it was incredible. As a principal, I was incredibly humbled to be a part of an organization that is so proud of, of accomplishments, from students to staff across the board. To hear Mr. Hocken Smith, and Deena Butcher, and I could go on and on, teachers who are teacher leaders in our building, talk about the very things that I would only hope would be a part of our school, and to see that they own it, and that our whole school owns it, and to hear how the interviews go. So, a whole process of getting to do this is so valuable, more than the paper, and, and really, sometimes, the results are great, and we're proud of that, but I'm really proud of what our staff got to do, and, and the level of pride we got to share. So, thank you for your support, because what I'll say, and we said in our presentation, the Springfield Public Schools as a system, with all the organization and support systems, and the focus on continuous improvement, it is that process that starts here, that really does build all the way down at each level in the, in the district, into our school and into our classrooms. So, thank you, Dr. Ritter, thank you, because it's really is an accomplishment of our school system, not just Kickapoo High School, so thank you.
Need to ask one of the students, I understand it's the first time you voted today.
Yes.
Yeah, way to go. Congratulations. That's awesome. I had the opportunity to walk Kickapoo today, and a nice improvement for a year, really, really need, you guys need to be patted on the back. What I really enjoyed more than anything in a number of the classes, foreign language, communication arts, science, especially in the science area, a lot of innovation, and also kids being innovative around it, especially the Teacher of the Year last year, I believe it was, in the science room, where he was teaching kids how to build buildings for earthquakes. And I thought that was phenomenal. So, anyway, you have good things going on at Kickapoo. Thank you for being here tonight.
Congratulations, Mr. Schmitz and staff, to the advanced students. Moving on to strategic discussion, the first part of that, the budget process and focus group timelines, Dr. Ritter, you want to, on the strategic timeline, I mean, the strategic, oh, Mr. Manus.
Mr. Manus.
Okay. I didn't have that on here.
Dr. Ritter, did you want to take that, or?
Oh, no. I can, but no.
I'm pretty sure of that, I saw his eyes about that.
Just a brief update on the process that was initiated during your board retreat this past summer. We have been conducting the initial focus groups with teachers, parents, leadership, and principals. And the, the one thing that I want to emphasize, in terms of the, the process we're going through, is the first stage that we began a few weeks ago is for feedback purposes, to listen to the comments surrounding some of the ideas, or some of the things that we're looking at in terms of budget options for the future. And I want to make sure I thank those individuals who attended the last few weeks, they, they came on their own time, very sincere, and also, I would like to thank them for their frankness. They felt very comfortable, even though they were held here at Craft, and, and usually, I like to go out to the sides, but they felt very comfortable, I think, in sharing their thoughts on, on these topics, and I'm very appreciative of the manner in which that took place. So, we have some additional feedback. Over the course of the next few weeks, I will be conducting some smaller group discussions. I had one today at Kickapoo, and we'll continue to do those. In addition to the focus groups, we're looking at a survey for our community to be in the field next week, and I will bring back to cabinet and the board for the regular meeting, the results, and the initial feedback from the focus groups, and also some feedback from our community in general with a phone survey. Some of the topics that we've looked at in the focus groups, and they're not exclusively held to these, we opened up for other discussion, but we've covered the scheduling at the secondary level, and the savings that could be extracted from a change in scheduling, start times, boundary changes, and also non-mandated programs throughout the district. So, a lot of great discussion around those items, and we'll continue to receive that feedback, bring it to the board in November, and then we'll look at some additional extended feedback that could go to the community and district-wide, on the topics that we really want to focus in on from here. So, I'd be glad to take any questions at this time.
Questions? Ms. Callen?
When do we anticipate having that feedback come to the board?
The regular meeting in November, I will have with a phone survey, and-
Oh, two weeks. Maybe you said that, I was-
Feedback. And just so, for clarification purposes, the focus groups have been randomly selected, but the intent of the focus groups is not obviously to do some type of count on the issues, but to receive some feedback, what positive, negative, surrounding the topics that we're bringing up.
Questions? Well, I know that, that, I mean, it's very appropriate, I know it came out of a time of concerns for our budget last year, as it came out looking forward, and, and some of us heard some stuff at MSBA last week, with the school budget, with state financial picture over the next couple of years, and, and so a couple of meetings I've been to looking forward, and all I hear is, we haven't seen anything yet, from a state budget standpoint, next year, the next year, is not looking pretty. I, I mean, I think it's really appropriate that we're taking a step now, early in the process, to help as we move down the road. So, yeah, it's, it's not looking good, from a state budgetary standpoint, over the next couple of years, if the numbers hold up that, that they tell us. So, appreciate all your work, Mark, on that, and, and I think the focus groups, thank you.
If I may follow up on that statement, to give it a positive spin?
I am. Try.
Okay. And that is, basically, working the economic development, here in Mac Holliday, I think his last name was Holliday, Mac Holliday, made it very, very clear to us, if we are going to sustain and going to do well as a country, we got to really make sure we support K-12 education. He says, if you don't support K-12 and higher ed, of course, he was really, in both cases, he says, you might as well ride a ticket going south. And so, anyway, and he says, you're going to always hear the complaints about not, you know, not being efficient, not being effective, he says, that's, that's not there anymore. It's over. It's time to look at it otherwise. So, I think there's, you know, I'm, of course, I'm going to say that, and that's really what I was hearing from, but it's not only there, it's interesting, the governor hired the same company to Market Street, to do a review for the economic picture as far as Missouri is concerned, and they are doing regional, getting regional feedback, and without exception, every region is pushing, saying, got to have a strong K-12. If you're going to, if you're going to come out of the economic picture, and you're going to start looking, and Missouri's going to start taking strides to be the top, in the top 10, as far as states, as far as economics is concerned, education's got to be there. So, I just thought I'd say that again, so, okay.
Okay. Moving on to the other strategic item that we wanted to talk about tonight, was to discuss board committees and committee structures. And I, before, before we go into that discussion, I'd like to make a, a brief statement, particularly concerning our finance committee, which we've heard some about. But the practice of meeting with board members for informational purposes regarding financial matters is a longstanding practice established under previous administration. It's my understanding that these meetings were initiated for the purpose of developing an understanding of district financial matters, and aiding financial, finance staff in preparing presentations to the school board about fiscal matters. As this was already established practice, these meetings have continued, certainly while I've been president. These informational meetings were regularly held each month, but this was not a formal committee of the board, a quorum of the board was never present, and no action was ever taken during these meetings. Recent discussions have raised questions about whether these meetings are subject to the Sunshine Law. As a board and a school district, we have always made, and will continue to make it our goal, to be transparent. It's my recommendation that we continue our efforts to be transparent and formalize this committee. As a formal committee of the board, with committee members appointed by me, the committee meetings, when scheduled, will then be subject to all Sunshine Law provisions. I would also like to state unequivocally, that it was always the intention of this board administration, and I'm certain of prior boards and administrative staff, to achieve nothing more than improved understanding of financial matters with these discussions. No decisions were made, or obviously votes taken, while these informational meetings were held. So, I'll open the floor up for any comments on, about board committees, or if anybody has any. Ms. Callen? General?
Since I've been on the board, it's been my, it's, it's been the practice that there haven't really been any board committees, you know, sometimes, when we go to MSBA, there's the Personnel Committee of the Board, and there's different, you know, different boards structure things differently. So, I know we've had board representation on the Insurance Committee, and, you know, certainly, I served on the Finance Committee for several years, and, you know, I guess my feeling is, if there's any sort of question about whether these meetings need to follow the Sunshine Law regulations, which, you know, I think if, we have nothing to hide, I guess that's what I'm trying to say, so I guess I would be supportive of, if we formalize that appointment, you know, as that group of people need to meet, that, you know, we follow all the procedures pursuant to the Sunshine Law. And, I mean, I don't think there'd be any changes in the kind of things that were discussed in there, or, like you said, no decisions were ever made, no recommendations were ever made. As I understand it, it was started during the 2000, when we were managing the 2000 bond.
My understanding.
Mr. Renner's always been our historian.
I mean, it was never intended for that committee to make any decisions, and in fact, I, I mean, I couldn't say it for 100% sure, but I don't think that committee has ever even been on our agenda as a formal report even by. So, it was never intended to, that that group make any decisions for the board, or to do anything but to help with the discussion of that, of financial issues that would be brought to the board. My question is, if that, what's the difference, or you all tell me what, I think there's a huge difference in us being on a benefits committee?
District.
Because it's not a board committee, we would only be there, and what's, what's your understanding of the difference there?
I think that's true, that it's, it's not a board committee. I mean, even though there's board represent, board people on it, board members on it, I don't think it's a standing, certainly not a standing committee, nor a, nor a board committee. And I think one of the things with that one, too, is particularly on the benefits, you know, here real soon, there's going to be a collective bargaining issue, anyway. And so, whether we have board members on that, I mean, it's not going to be, it is a collective bargaining issue, and whether we have board members on that, will be a question that we'll be dealing with down the road, so.
Yeah, I just think-
But, but back, back a step, yeah, it's not a board committee.
So, if we appoint, I mean, there could be other starting time committee, or you name it, you know, that if a board member serves on that committee, but it's not a board committee, then that's, that's a different issue?
That's correct.
It's your understanding, or-
That's administrative.
That that is a whole different issue, that when we're a part of a bigger group, and we're not the only ones there, that then that doesn't, isn't part of the Sunshine Law, or is a part?
Of board-appointed committees?
No.
Administrative committees or not?
Okay.
Well, they are.
Depending on what they are.
I read the Sunshine Law. Anyway, Missouri's quite different from everybody else. But anyway, the, yes, as long as it's, it's an administrative type of committee, that ultimately is going to make a recommendation to the board, then, then it would be considered needed to have it, as well as being posted.
If it reports to the board, if it's a committee, if, if I appoint a committee to make a recommendation to the board?
Yes.
It is an open meeting.
But, but it's not an open meeting just because of board members on there, it's an open meeting because that's-
Because they're reporting to the board, they're making a report, whether it's board members on it or not, it doesn't make any difference.
Okay, good difference.
It can be, it can be a group of citizens on the committee, if, if I put together a board committee of citizens to give me some feedback on whatever, that is an open, posted meeting.
I, I guess just the other thing is, oftentimes, I think we've all been in situations where, either in a workplace setting, or an organizational setting, you know, you've kind of inherited practices from previous times, and sometimes, you know, right or wrong, you don't step back and say, is this really something that's meeting, you know, our needs right now, and you just kind of go, okay, well, there's been a finance committee, we've known about it, so. So, I mean, I guess, I think, I think the bigger question is, do we, as a board, feel that we need to have several board members act in that role? And if that's valuable, then it should be appointed, and it should, you know, we should follow all the guidelines of, of the Sunshine Law, but if it's not needed, why just have it if it's not needed? And I guess that's, to me, that's the bigger question. Do we feel like having a finance committee of the board serves a valuable role, you know, and I, maybe the administration-
I think during these times, if budget, heavy budget concern, heavy budget discussions, that might be an option. It might be something where we would like to have maybe two or three board members.
Maybe have more than two.
Yeah, I would say three board members, not four, three, three board members, and sit down and say, hey, these are the, these are the results, and, and then eventually that's posted, and then the recommendation comes to the board. And, yeah, so that might be a possibility.
And I think part of this discussion is bigger than just finance committee, and I think that's just a trigger, because we've had the discussion before about standing committees of the board, and I, many boards, and most boards that I've talked to don't have them, a few do. I, I have concern about having standing committees that are taking action, or recommendation to the board, because I don't, this is more philosophical than anything, but I just have a problem that I don't want to do anything that would jeopardize, or minimize, the accountability or, or responsibility of the board as a whole. I, I just think that's really important, that we act as a board of the whole, as much as possible. Now, you know, advisory, getting information, that's two different things, but establishing standing committees that make some decisions, or recommendations to us, that we've got to say, we agree with you, or don't agree with you. I, and this is me, I just personally prefer to have that discussion at the board table with the seven of us.
Well, we're a small enough board, a lot of times that practice is with larger boards that have a, you know, it's, it's much bulkier to have a discussion, I mean, there are, you know, there are college boards that have 40 people on them, and I think oftentimes, they decide to break that work into committees, just for efficiency. So, I, I mean, I think we're a small enough group that, I think those discussions have been, and are best kept at the board of a whole.
Example is West Plains Superintendent Fred, I think it was his last name, and the board basically assigned a public group to work through their budget stress and struggles. And so, they, they developed a budget committee, including citizens, students, and teachers, and administrators. Let's see, so there's an example, now, the board set that up, and so, so it could go any which way, and this board works well as a group.
And I'm not opposed to some ad hoc tax, task, task forces, or something to that effect, on a specific item or something, to report back, and it's, you know, and go through there. I just stand- I, I just, standing committees sometimes I think either creates bureaucracy or mitigates some of the, what I consider the responsibility of this board as a whole to take action. So. Ms. Whittaker?
Well, certainly in the past couple of weeks, this topic has been discussed and dissected and I think misunderstood. It honestly, as a new board member, and I think I made this statement before, participating in this committee, as we continue to refer to it, was probably one of the best tutorials that I ever had to help me be a better board member. Because I did get to ask our CFO questions, our, our bond administrator questions. Those are things that I can do independently. I can call them up on the phone and ask them myself. And so we certainly would have that line of communication available. And I would have never participated in a meeting with the kind of fiscal responsibility that the financial committee, if it were to be making recommendations or taking action on something, that's simply not part of a committee that's small. And it certainly would have been in violation of Sunshine. It never functioned that way. We've tried to explain that multiple ways. I don't think that we can win this argument as to how the intention and what the purposes were and how it served us over time. However, with the times the way they are and recognizing where, where we are with the media and the media coverage, I think Mr. Lee's approach to this is appropriate. And I'm taking it, Mr. Lee, that when and if you decide you want these committees to form, or if the board chooses to have them form, you will ask or ask for volunteers and set it up and post it appropriately. And beyond that, we're pretty much done with this topic.
I just want to say one more thing, and that is, hey, you got a requirement, continuous improvement, you look at the requirement and you just move on. And that's pretty much what it is. And so you're always looking for ways to get better. I don't know if this is an opportunity to get better or not, but it's something we have to respond to, so.
Oh, Ms. Hosmer?
I guess before we make any decision on this, I'd like to, maybe following what Chris was saying, that, that we have a fuller discussion of whether we need, whatever we call this thing, and whatever it actually is. The way I read the Sunshine Law is that, that it's, you got to act pursuant to Sunshine Law if you have a committee that is, is charged with reporting back or making recommendations to the board or taking votes, whatever. And I've never understood that this committee has ever done that. It's been more, my understanding, more of an informational, information gathering exercise. That said, I mean, if you're saying, Jerry, that you want to formalize the Finance Committee, then are you then going to say, we want you to make recommendations back to the board? And, you know, I, I think I'd be uncomfortable with that, having two board members making recommendations to the board. So I can understand formalizing it because then, then we, you know, we, we kind of capitulate and say, yeah, we, you know, we'll do what we're going to do. But I guess my understanding is that it's always been an information gathering exercise and that the way I understand the Sunshine Law, that, that technically wouldn't go in under the Sunshine, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be, you wouldn't be required to, to, to have agendas and et cetera, et cetera. But, but I think the bigger question, as Chris said, is, is whether or not there is a continuing need. And if there's a continuing need, then I think we need to discuss it and make a decision what's best for Springfield Public Schools and not necessarily what's best for the Springfield Newsletter or the KY3 or Fox or whoever else. I mean, you obviously want, you follow every law that, that is laid out in front of you, but, but at bottom, we've got to do what's best for this board and, and 24,000 kids. So, you know, and, and whether or not somebody comes at us with an editorial or anything else, if we're doing something that needs to be done differently, let's do it. But, but if, if we're doing something, we're going to change something because somebody's, you know, you know, shining a light somewhere, you know, maybe we don't need to change it. I, I don't know. I, I think we need a fuller discussion of whether or not what we have done with, with Tom and Jean getting this information, whether or not it needs to continue to be done. If it does need to continue to be done, then, then I think it should continue. And I don't know that, you know, formalizing the arrangement and does anything other than changing it into something that's never been. Does that make sense?
No, I, I, I'm not explaining, I'm not formalizing to the point that I'm asking for recommendations from a board of two people. That's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is, you know, each April, we appoint, or I appoint, put two people on the board, on that Finance Committee. And if that's the case, it is a board, a board-appointed committee, which does make it fall under the, the realm of the Sun, of the Sunshine Law. I mean, that's the way I read, that's the way I was reading it. And so.
And I guess I'm not.
Formalizing to the point, if we need the committee meeting to have it, then we'll have it and we'll go through those hoops to do that. I, I think your point's well taken. Because I do think it provided value from an informational standpoint. But I haven't been on it for a couple of years.
Yeah, and I guess what I understand before I was on the board, which was seven years ago, so, you know, and the first bond was passed in 2000. And it's my understanding, and this could be completely wrong, but I paid attention to things, you know, before I was on the board, that there were an incredible number of change orders and that were consuming a lot of the board as a whole's time at that point. And it's my understanding that the board back then, which I think, you know, only Bruce would have been a part of, decided that it would be helpful to have a smaller group of the board work through some of that information with the administration so that when it came to the board as a whole, there, there would be the opportunity to kind of focus in on that, that information that from a board perspective, people would be interested in and would help them make the decision about whether to approve or not approve the change order. That's my understanding of how it evolved. And so I guess that's what I was saying, and I agree with Andy. If that's not something we continue to need as a board, you know, I think the other piece of this equation is, does the administrative team feel that that's helpful to them? You know, that, I mean, that's the one thing about a school board is, you know, we're a team of eight with Dr. Ritter and then his administrative team. So, you know, I think it's important for us to hear from the administrative side, and that may not be tonight, but to sort through, you know, has having this advisory kind of or ability to informa, you know, share information, has that been helpful from administrative side? Because I wouldn't want to shut it down and say, it hasn't been that helpful for us if it has been helpful in terms of administrative, so.
And, and what, my goal tonight to have?
No, 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 I know.
To resolve this thing tonight?
Right. But I just saying, you know, I'd like to hear from.
Yes, no, but I just.
Steve and, and Norm if that's been helpful.
Yeah, I'd echo that. I'd hope that administration will bring us back some recommendations on this. I don't, if, if we, I, I would suspect that we know a lot more about school board governance than a poorly informed editorial writer does, and I don't want us to change things if it's working. And if you need our feedback or a subset of the board's feedback, I think that's probably very helpful and we're willing to do whatever it takes. On the other hand, I've got a lot of other things I can do with my time than, than come to unnecessary meetings. And, and I, I think it's clear that we've never brought back any recommendations to the board for action. So if it's an education process that works both ways and it's needed, let's find a mechanism to do it. If it's not needed, then we can do other things.
Okay. Comments, anybody got to say?
Just at a time, I see.
Moving on. Action items for vote, tax anticipation, 5101, tax anticipation notes. Ms. Jodes?
Thank you. At the October 5th meeting, the board authorized administration to solicit proposals for tax anticipation notes financing, if needed, not to exceed $10 million. Since then, an invitation to submit proposals was sent to 29 potential lenders, 26 having facilities within the district boundaries, and three others with existing relationships. The district received three qualifying proposals. UMB, United Missouri Bank submitted a proposal with a fixed interest rate of 0.98 percent with a $2,500 closing and documentation fees. And, and yes, that is 0.98 percent. That's an annual interest rate. I did ask them if I could throw my mortgage on top of that, but.
How about all of us?
No, they, they didn't go for that. Any short-term borrowing on the tax anticipation notes will be repaid from local property tax receipts to be received in mid-January. And at this time, we ask that the board accepts UMB's tax anticipation note financing proposal and adopts the resolution.
Questions? Questions for Ms. Jodes?
Can you just review again why this might be needed?
Our revenue is very seasonal. We receive the vast majority of our property tax revenue in January. So the November and December months are our low point in terms of cash flow.
And this is, it's just a just-in-case situation if needed?
It is just-in-case if needed.
Several years on the last.
We, we have not used it in the past.
Used it, but we've done this.
Yes, we have.
Other questions?
I move for acceptance of the recommendation.
Second?
Okay. My motion, Dr. Braden, second, and Ms. Callen, that the board accept the UMB tax anticipation note financing proposal dated 21st of October and adopts a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of tax anticipation notes. Any other questions? Ms. Hosmer?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, thank you, Ms. Jodes. Moving on for action items for separate consideration, 6.01, revision of board policy FF. Mr. Fisher?
Dr. Ritter and members of the board, tonight, we're requesting revision of board policy FF, naming new and existing facilities. This would allow our current fundraising activities to have flexibility within the Under the current naming of new and existing facilities, under guideline number six, the current policy reads names of an individual or family that have made a significant contributions to the district. And we would ask that it would now be included names of an individual, family, organization, or corporate entity that have made significant contributions to the district.
Questions for Mr. Fisher?
This is a policy that we changed just recently, is that right? Isn't that right?
Four years ago, I think.
It was.
Right before we named Harrison?
2007.
It was a Kikapoo field.
September 18th, 2007 was when this policy was last revisited.
I don't know whether, I, I think there was discussion at that time, if I memory serves, about corporate entities and, I don't recall. Bruce, Mr. Memory Man? Do you recall that discussion?
I, I do recall it. And it was primarily one board member, Dr. Holman, I believe, was concerned about it. I had a conversation with him. He's not here tonight. So he really, we can't really speak for him, but he's comfortable with it right now.
Okay, we will take action on that. Thank you. Two weeks. Item 6.01, revision of board policy JED, student absences and excuses. Dr. Ritter?
Mr. Hackelworth?
This is the first reading for revisions to board policy JED, student absences and excuses. Revisions simply align our policy with current MSBA recommendations regarding absences as they relate to children in foster care. Becky Morgan is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have regarding these changes. Becky is our district foster care liaison, if you weren't aware.
Questions for Ms. Hackelworth?
Becky, way to go with attendance. Awesome.
It is awesome. Everybody's excellent.
It's, oh my gosh. I'm sorry, that's not.
That's okay. You digress.
I don't think that's, I don't see that on the agenda.
No, that's the next.
Excellent. Okay, okay. Item 6.01, revision of board policy, graduation exercises. This is second reading, so I know. Dr. Harold? Anybody have any questions? Any questions come up since we've heard this once before?
This is the second reading, yes.
This is the second reading. Hey, you're off the hook. 6.04, revision of board policy J E C A, admission of students. This is also a second reading. Do you have any new questions, Dr. Harold? I don't want to put you to too much work here. Any questions for Dr. Harold or additional questions since we have heard it once? Okay. All right, 6.05, 612 science major instructional goals. Ms. Kissinger?
Ms. Kissinger. Dr. Pomperine is here tonight with staff from the curriculum department to share with you the recommended revisions to the major instructional goals. So, Dr. Pomperine?
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to present the science major instructional goals for 6th through 12th grade for board, board approval. Last May, the board received a program evaluation report for the 612 science. And since that time, Mrs. Ann Wallenmeyer, Science Curriculum Facilitator, has convened a broad-based committee, including teachers, parents, and other expert voices in order to review and revise the major instructional goals for middle school and high school science. The names of the individuals who participated are included in your board item, and I'd like to recognize and thank Mrs. Wallenmeyer for her leadership and work on this important work. So, thank you, Mrs. Wallenmeyer. Springfield Public Schools Major Instructional Goals, or MIGs, are statements which define the knowledge and skills that a student will acquire in a specific grade level or course. Major instructional goals have been developed in order to help define performance objectives for students, to help identify tasks to be performed by students and teachers in order to accomplish those objectives, and also to help determine the means for evaluating student progress. The science major instructional goals presented to you this evening have been carefully and deliberately aligned to several important sources, which include the National Science Education Standards, the Missouri Show Me Standards, as well as the Missouri Science Grade Level Expectations and Course Level Expectations, both last revised in November of 2008. In the process of reviewing the Springfield Public Schools High School Science Course offerings, the Curriculum Development Council identified five course title changes which are being recommended in order to more accurately communicate the content of the courses. Integrated Science, a required freshman class, will be retitled Physics First, and we talked with you about that program in the program evaluation in May of last year. Integrated Science Honors will then become Physics First Honors. Environmental Chemistry will be retitled Everyday Chemistry. And Physics II will be retitled Advanced Physics, AP Physics B, which is an algebra-based physics. AP Physics will become Engineering Physics, which is AP Physics C, which is the calculus-based physics. Also, the Curriculum Development Council recommends one new course entitled Astronomy. That, that course be offered next year for students. The science major instructional goals presented tonight have been approved by the Science Curriculum Development Council, and it's our recommendation that the board approve them as presented. We do anticipate that we'll bring the board a curriculum resource adoption item to purchase textbooks and instructional materials necessary to support, support these major instructional goals at the March board study session. At this time, we'd certainly be willing and able to answer questions.
Ms. Callen?
Would astronomy be a high school level? And would we anticipate that all five high schools would offer it?
Again, a site decision, but they would certainly have that option. And then, of course, it.
course, it boils down to, you know, the number of students that elect, select the course, so, yes.
Ritter?
You know, it may say something about my life, but I actually read through all this over the weekend, and it's pretty impressive, and if, look at some of these upper-level courses, obviously, a lot of time and effort has gone into it, and I hope we can, you know, it probably is coming on us a little bit to push this out to the students and really try to draw some students in. I mean, this is about as 21st century skills as you get.
Indeed. They did a great job, and they did focus on that specifically, so we do appreciate the fact that you reviewed those, and they do represent a tremendous amount of work on the part of a lot of people.
Our science classrooms are phenomenal, and the high school especially.
Ms. Hosmer?
How does this differ than, where are the revisions? I mean, how does this differ than what we've got in place now?
The specific courses were outlined in the item. The, each, each course has major instructional goals, and then the more granular objectives that are more specific and measurable and so on, and those, line by line, are revised, and so you could certainly hold the two documents side by side and see the changes that have happened over the last seven years. And, you know, some of them clearly were more substantial than others, but.
So, we don't have, we don't have that document to?
We do not, we have not, we have not done that in the past where we've bolded and stroked through and.
Is there a, that's something that'd be very helpful for me. I mean, you see that a lot in legislation and statutes, because then you can see what it was before, what it is now, and you can understand, or you can ask questions about why'd you change this sentence and why was this knocked out and?
That's a very substantial document, and we could, you know, provide that if that would help.
The new is 89 pages, so.
But aren't there programs that immediately?
And, you know, it's not as easy as.
Urges those things or not?
Well, I don't think it's quite as easy as what we're accustomed to on, say, a board policy where we take an existing policy. Some of these are more substantial than that. Again, I think the document would be rather vast, but that's certainly a consideration.
And then the other question I have is, you've kind of already alluded to this, but, you know, we're, we have a group working around the 21st century goals and kind of where we want to go as a district, and we've talked about it from the first meeting, you know, making sure that what we do going forward is easily, you know, meshed in together with whatever that group comes up with and the board adopts in terms of where we want to focus as a district. So, are these done in such a way that we're going to be able to easily mesh those two things? Everybody shaking their head yes, so maybe.
Sure.
You understood my question, I guess.
Yes, and Annie can add to this, but, for example, if you look at Engineering Physics and you look at, on the very first page, Applying Concepts of Scientific Inquiry, and it says, "Combine new complex information, data, or text with given information," and they have specifically identified that that aligns with one of the capabilities, and that's critical thinking. So, you see, there's been some explicit alignment throughout that. And one of the things we know that will be a task of curriculum as we go forward with the model, we'll be making sure that their curriculum is a living document, and although we bring it to you every seven years, their curriculum staff is constantly looking for new standards and updating that based on teacher feedback and student performance and so on, and so they'll continue to do that as we roll out the learning model. So, Annie?
The 21st century learning capabilities are very much a part of science, and as the teachers, we have national standards for our 21st century learning skills, so we looked at those as we rewrote the major instructional goals and objectives. And as Anita said, we chose four to focus on, which were critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and creativity. And so, you'll notice throughout both the middle school and the high school that we've aligned those with our MIGs number one and MIG number two, which are our process standards, because we see those as process capabilities that students would learn how to do within that content area.
Any other questions? And you made the comment, it's, you know, we're a seven-year cycle. I heard a lot happens in seven years, and.
I'll tell you one thing that I noticed, was at Glendale, is it Fred?
Yes.
Fred, Fred's class, he had whiteboard over here, he had the smartboard, and it was humming, and I had a headache when I was, anyway, he had the smartboard, and really, the only thing that's missing is for each child to have an iPad. I think if each child had an iPad, I think then you're really, really going. That's the only thing that was missing. So, anyway, thought I'd share that. So, seven years from now, it might be something else.
Board members, too?
And this is the second step?
This is the second step of, yes, a three-step. We came in May, and then we're back tonight, and then we'll bring the recommendation in March.
Okay. Moving on, health education, 6.06, health education, health, physical education, and driver ed, education major instructional goals. Dr. Pomperine?
Yes, last May, the board also received a program evaluation, which was step one, for K-12 health, K-12 physical education, and then the high school driver education program. And since that time, Mrs. Teresa Miller, our curriculum facilitator, has worked with a broad-based committee in order to review and revise the district major instructional goals in those areas. The names of all the individuals who were involved in that process are also included in this board item, and I'd like to recognize Mrs. Miller for her leadership and work on that process. So, Teresa?
Thanks.
These major instructional goals, again, have been aligned to several important sources, the National Health and Physical Education Standards, the Missouri Show Me Standards, as well as the Missouri Health Education and Physical Education Grade Level Expectations, which were both revised by the state of Missouri in 2007. And the driver education major instructional goals were revised to the, or aligned to the Missouri Driver Guide published by the Missouri Department of Revenue. These major instructional goals have been approved by the respective curriculum development councils for each of the content areas, and it's our recommendation that the board approve them as presented. And again, as part three of this process, we would anticipate bringing a recommendation for resources in the spring. Happy to answer questions about health, PE, driver ed.
Same question before in terms of 21st century skills and the work going along, going on around that, that we made sure that these are going to mesh as well?
Probably not as deliberate in this as we reflected in the, in the science, but again, as Mrs. Kissinger indicated, the curriculum guides are a living document. We're able to update those and push those out to teachers and principals often, and so we'll be monitoring that SPS learning model work very closely, and that'll be reflected in, in the curriculum guides that the teachers use.
What I find that's kind of interesting is it's the kids today have high interest in health, whereas three years ago, they were bored stiff. And so, I think health is becoming more and more prevalent because it's in the media, it's all over the place, and interesting to see the kids really want, really want to participate in that and learn it, so it's a neat thing. Nice change.
Okay, moving on to 6.07, Project Lead the Way, major instructional goals. Back to the podium.
Okay, this third item is Project Lead the Way, and you may recall that in June of 2007, and then in November of 2008, the board approved major instructional goals for the first Project Lead the Way pre-engineering courses, one in 2007, and then two courses in 2008. This evening, we bring back the remaining courses in that sequence of pre-engineering courses for Project Lead the Way. And in addition to those pre-engineering classes, we also are bringing some major instructional goals for an additional Project Lead the Way program entitled Biomedical Sciences. Again, it uses the Project Lead the Way model, which has been very successfully implemented across the country since 1997. These, they had piloted in 2007, so they've actually been implemented in other districts within the state of Missouri and across the country, and as you know, biomedical science is a very high-demand career cluster for our students. So, Mrs. Rhonda Galberth, Career and Technical Education Curriculum Facilitator, and Mrs. Ann Wallenmeyer, Science Curriculum Facilitator, actually partnered on this work, and they used a partnership team, much like a Curriculum Development Council, to review the national Project Lead the Way program curriculum. You'll recall that that is a, we enter into an agreement, but we have the ability to customize that, and we've done that on these tonight as we have done in the past. So, tonight, we bring these major instructional goals forward for your review. The names of the individuals that partnered with us and participated in the partnership team are listed in your board item, and I'd also like to specifically recognize Ms. Galberth and Mrs. Wallenmeyer for their leadership on this, so.
Bless you.
The new Project Lead the Way course offerings presented tonight were created as a result of input from our advisory team committee, also after reviewing trend data from the labor markets, and then also student and parent interest that we've gathered through several surveys over the last 18 months. So, it's our recommendation that the board approve these major instructional goals and course offerings as they're presented. Again, we anticipate that any resources that will be required for implementation would come to you as a, as an action item in the spring. Be more than happy to answer questions about this as well.
Callen?
This choice programs at Kickapoo and Hillcrest, is that right?
The pre-engineering program is at four of our high schools.
Oh, at four.
Right. It's, initially, you're correct, it was at Kickapoo and Hillcrest, and then we added Glendale and Central, and so we have the pre-engineering at four.
I don't need to know this tonight, but it would be helpful for me to know how many students participate in these classes. Have we seen growth? Do you know?
Checked the two of them. Glendale's is full. In fact, they celebrated, I talked to the teacher, they celebrated because they had 11 women sign up, which was a surprise. But anyway, he's full, and he's waiting for these approvals, and he's just passionate about it. Now, Kickapoo's numbers aren't as strong.
Yeah, and I guess, and this is a little bit of an aside, and maybe we'll get this when we get a program evaluation or an update, but I'd also be interested in knowing how is this marketed or presented to students, to try to show them the value and the opportunities there, because I think you're right, engineering is a huge opportunity for a lot of our students.
Is, I certainly appreciate you having aerospace engineering?
Yes.
Good choice. Great choice. I guess my question is why versus mechanical or, are these courses picked by the national?
They're, this, this actually represents all of the pre-engineering courses.
That's awesome.
And we started with the foundational courses, you recall, that's why we started with three. There is a capstone, and then the rest of these are electives. They can be taken their junior year or concurrently with the capstone. And actually, as Dr. Ritter was talking about, Glendale, they've, they are very excited about the aerospace.
Yeah, I appreciate you having it in there, but it's a very specific curriculum, and that's why I was wondering.
Yes.
I wish we could start in the sixth grade.
Any other questions, Dr. Pomperine? No, this is a great, great program. Okay, moving on, curriculum course changes.
Final item for me tonight. As a part of our ongoing program evaluation and continuous improvement efforts, the Secondary Mathematics Curriculum Development Council, under the leadership of Jennifer Renninger, and I'd like to recognize her. They are recommending that our current high school course titled Algebra II be retitled as Algebra II Honors, and our current high school course titled Integrated Algebra II be retitled Algebra II. This course title change, if approved by the Board of Education, will be reflected in our district New Horizons Program of Studies, which we distribute to students in the winter as they contemplate their scheduling, and it'll also be reflected in the site scheduling packets that they receive, so that it could be implemented with the beginning of next year as a course change. This course name change is intended to more accurately and clearly communicate the content of the two high school math courses, not only to parents and students, but also to colleges and universities as they review that. So, this is consistent with, we have a geometry and geometry honors, and for quite some time, a number of years, we've had integrated algebra and algebra, and so we're asking to retitle those, so. It was unanimous recommendation from that group.
Questions for Dr. Pomperine on this item? Okay. I think you're done. Good job, thank you.
Current proposal for A+ is requiring a passing of the EOC in Algebra II. And so, anyway, we're doing a white paper on that and responding to that, but anyway, just want to give you a heads up on that while we talk about Algebra II. Okay?
Please note, routine action items listed under Section 7 for next meeting. Moving on to comments from the board, legislative update. Legislative update.
Tonight is the legislative update.
This will be an update.
Polls close in 20 minutes.
A few minutes here. And 20 minutes. But we are going to, let's, we are set for Wednesday, the 10th, I believe it is, to meet with legislators. I don't have the time on that in front of me. Four o'clock?
I think so.
Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday, the 10th. And then the, we're also meeting as a group, the city, county, and us, on the 30th of November. I believe you have that in your board updates. And we don't, I don't know if we have, it's going to be at the county, we don't, we don't have an exact, I don't have a time or a location yet. Just remember to put it on the 30th.
Well, I mean, we will have to get invitations out.
The 10th is next week.
Well, I think what's going to need to have, well, thoughts there is to find out who wins, and then either board or I call, and then there'll be a letter. Kathy's been hanging on to the letters, so.
When do they go on their? When do the?
It's usually.
If they're new, yeah, when do they go on their tour?
We checked, it's, I think, almost immediate, by the end of this week type.
Will they be back?
Yes, because it's the following week, it's when the, the 10th.
It's just a week.
Right. They usually have orientation almost immediately. I don't know. Kathy checked, but.
Okay.
With Scott Mars. Scott Mars is, that's all I'm going to say, I don't, I don't have the details.
But it's November 10th at 4:00.
Right.
Yeah, here.
Here.
And we do our legislative priorities.
Right.
And we have shared those with several organizations, I know.
Right, we have.
Legislative issue, okay. Any future issues? None? How about other? Ms. Callen?
Yes, at the end of last week, Thursday evening, all day Friday, and most of the day on Saturday, I was privileged to represent the board at, in anti-racism workshop that has been put on by a variety of organizations, and this is operating at the same time as the Chambers Initiative. They're not in competition with one another, just, they kind of, both of these initiatives kind of came up at the same time. But there were representatives from OTC, the League of Women Voters, the NAACP, Missouri State, Drury, SPS, other faith-based community in the city of Springfield, and probably forgetting some other ones, but we did, Anna Berry from our Office of, I don't know what the title is, our Office of Diversity.
Cultural Diversity.
Cultural Diversity was there representing our staff, and I think did an excellent job of representing a lot of what we are trying to do as a school district to bridge some of those issues that arise through, you know, sometimes misunderstandings or miscommunication, but this piggybacks on when I was at the MSBA meeting the weekend before, it's been a busy October.
I went to a presentation by Brentwood School District that looked at their achievement gap between their white students and their students of color, and started to look at ways to address that through what I would consider non-academic means, but more in terms of engaging their staff and their faculty in racism awareness and, you know, cultural differences, and really helping people to understand how very... How institutions are set up oftentimes to favor or to provide the majority of... The majority have the privilege, and oftentimes, the minority doesn't. So, I just think that I gave Anna Brentwood's name and I talked to her about, you know, the possibility of looking into what they are doing, because, again, in our system of continuous quality improvement, I think there's always a way to move along that spectrum of awareness and understanding. So, it was really my privilege to represent the Board and work with other community leaders, and I know there are other initiatives going on at the same time, and there's a plan to bring the participants of the individuals that have been participating in the Chambers classes and workshops together with those of us who participated in this workshop to develop a community plan. So, I think some exciting times, and certainly within the school system, you know, we educate everybody, which I have always thought is a real benefit of our school district, and I think we certainly have some opportunities that even some of these other organizations don't have in terms of who we serve and who we see every day and just understanding particularly students, where they are, and trying to have a better understanding of maybe some of the challenges our minority students face that, you know, we just aren't aware of, so...
I know this has been a real... High priority for the Chamber and the Chamber leadership this year.
The Chambers is going to be the November 11th to 12th.
This is their second class. Yeah, they've already...
And I really hope that that traction continues, and it's not a... That it's not just because of one person's effort. That was a focus of his this year. I hope it gathers traction and keeps moving, and the momentum continues. I think it will, but...
I do, too.
I hope that that's the case, that the Chamber and the community can jump on that wagon and continue keeping them moving.
Nicole Kimbrough is going to be going to Chambers. I'm going, and then also, help me, he's from... From Pip... No, from Reed. Jeanne's husband.
Oh.
Brad Clift. Thank you.
Lester.
Lester, yes. Anyway, they're going to be there as well, so looking forward to it.
I think the fact that these kinds of discussions have gone on in kind of separate circles in the community, and now are coming together, is a really good sign.
If I may say another subject, three years ago, four years ago, we would have never dreamt that Park View is in the state playoffs of football.
And Hillcrest.
And Hillcrest. But I know, but I had to say Park View. You know, who'd have ever thought? Anyway, they're going to be going up to Lee's Summit tomorrow night, and then Hillcrest plays at home tomorrow night, so... But still, it's just something like that, so...
Who'd have thought that?
Yeah, who'd have thought that? But anyway, just a little note on that.
Any other items for the Board? Don't forget your plus deltas, and we do not have executive session tonight, so there's no need to do there. So, if there's no other business before the Board, this meeting is adjourned.
Election results in a half hour.
Election in a half hour? If you haven't voted, go vote now.
Better hustle. You got to vote 10 minutes.